Good evening and welcome to the November 13th meeting of the Revere City Council. Will all please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo is absent. Councilor Sorino?
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and City Council President McKenna.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 30th?
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered, accepted.
Calendar item number three, Cataldo Ambulance, the Revere Fire Department will appear before the City Council to discuss the city's ambulance services.
Come up here, please. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam President. Chris Bright, Revere Fire Chief. With us tonight from Cataldo Ambulance, President Dennis Cataldo and Senior Chief of Operations, Rob White, are with us to answer any questions.
Councilor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, Mr. Cataldo, thank you all so much for being here. I know I filed the motion last time, and I just want to be clear, this isn't to speak badly in any way, shape, or form. I just know a lot of people in the city are very curious about if there are anything, if there are things in motion to help increase, you know, response times or staffing or whatever it might be. So, again, appreciate you being here, looking forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I can tell you, this is something that we do talk about quite frequently, and it's been an industry-wide problem throughout the country, but we have the right guys here who could certainly answer any questions or concerns about how we're trying to always improve on the response times.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. My concerns are the same, Chief. Thank you for being here. It actually came to my attention as I was campaigning one day, and on the corner of New Hall, a call came in. The fire department was there, very fast. It was 17 minutes later that the ambulance showed up. Now, if that's, if that, a life and death call, you know, is, we're talking minutes, 17 is a very long time, and in a city that's only, only growing, I'm in agreeance with my colleague to the right, Cogliandro, we need some information on how we, even if it's us helping the situation, how can we even be of help to produce numbers and get that stuff out there? But the response time is just unacceptable right now in the city of Revere for the ambulances. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Councilor Morbido?
Thank you. One question, we keep mentioning response time. Year over year, take the last three years, what would you say our average response time? Where has it spiraled downward?
I was told five minutes, 32 seconds for an ambulance response time.
Now, and I know our Revere firefighter fighters, they're well-equipped, they're trained, they arrive on the scene, they have the tools needed to resuscitate people, keep them stabilized until the ambulance comes. We cannot transport, that's the issue, correct, in the wait time? And I know it's just the way the industry is. Is it mostly hiring the staff? Is that what, and people not being trained for that EMTs? Is that the main issue in the industry?
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you all for inviting us here. So, as was introduced by the chief, Dennis Cataldo, the president of Cataldo Ambulance Service, I know many of you. So, to answer your question, maybe I should just back up a little bit as it relates to the response times and then the staffing that's required to meet the demands of the city. So, this goes, this is not a COVID issue, although there are a lot of things that stem back now two or three years that have, have contributed greatly to the nationwide staffing deficit that is, that we face in EMS right now. And a lot of it, it does have to do with what occurred during COVID, the amount of folks that left the workforce. And during that period of time, although people don't necessarily immediately recognize what occurred, was that the EMTs and paramedics that work in the field are generally use our services or our industry as a stepping stone to something else. So, there's a high turnover rate, there has always been a high turnover rate. And what occurred during the COVID period is because so much of the training and education is done in person and has to be done in a hospital setting, everything closed down. So, the number of EMTs and paramedics that were graduating over a two-plus-year period of time was dramatically decreased. In fact, at one point, the National Registry of Paramedics, that usually re-registered 17,000 paramedics or new paramedics a year, only registered 480. That's how drastic the impact was to the staffing. So, we continue to face those challenges all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the nation. So, I just, I speak to you as both the president of the, of my company and the president of the Mass Ambulance Association, and actually as the Region One Director of the American Ambulance Association, which is seven states. So, I'm trying to give you like good qualified information as to what's happened. So, we've tried to be creative about how we deploy resources and how we utilize resources to put the right ambulance, provide the right ambulance to the patient based on the patient's security. So, a lot of times, what we are seeing now in the field, and I don't know specifically, Counselor, what the circumstances were there, is that we've learned to accept, and for good or for bad, that some response times based on patient's security will be longer. So, every call since 2012 goes through an EMD process. You guys have a good system in place here in Revere, and we receive a call, it's triaged based on information that's provided to us by the caller. And so, you see that on TV, you know, is, can you see the person? Are they, you know, are they alert? Are they awake? Are they standing? Are they fall? What was the mechanism of injury? So, that you're trying to send an ambulance that's, you know, that is the most responsible. And so, if you hock it back years ago, and there was plenty of ambulances available, this whole like six-minute response time thing was what everybody stood on as like needed to be the standard, and nobody ever expected to be standing on the scene for 10, 12, or even 15 minutes. But today, things are a little bit different. Not only are calls being triaged and the appropriate ambulance being sent, but you're trying to also leave ambulances available for the more serious patients that may need them. So, if you keep, you know, drawing the patients to the, the patients that aren't in a situation that's life-threatening, it does lessen your ability to be available when they are. So, that, that is definitely a contributor to what you see as terms of response times. And we've worked that system very well to be able to provide services when they're needed in a timely fashion to the patients that need the higher levels of care the most. And I think Rob just provided a bunch of information to you, and we monitor these response times closely. We meet with the chief on a regular basis, and Revere is a very, very busy community. So, this whole, you know, you all know where our base location is, there's three, there's three vehicles in there, there's two transport and ambulances and a, and what we call a fly car, which is, which is a vehicle that's staffed by a paramedic that is available to respond to a number of different calls. But those resources that you see in that one little location aren't even close to what the city requires in order to support the community on a daily basis. It's a, is regularly, regularly, quite regularly, six, seven, eight ambulances at a time will be in the community servicing citizens of Revere. And so, that is, it's very demanding. Those resources could come from Lynn, they can come from Malden, they can come from Chelsea, they can come from any, any direction, but we're always shifting resources to try and get the most utilization and provide the best response that we possibly can. And so, we're trying hard internally to increase our staffing levels. So, a little bit about, you know, I could talk on and on, as much as you want to hear, as little as you want to hear, but I could talk on and on. You know, quite a large company, we, you know, responsible to a number of communities. We are a very large training center. We're currently running three EMT programs. We, we started our own paramedic program, we're graduating our very first class this spring, that will be 12 new paramedics. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but trying to find a paramedic today is trying to find a needle in a haystack. Not only are, not only do a lot of individuals that enter private, private EMS as EMTs become paramedics, a lot of them are destined to work in fire departments. There are smaller fire departments in, in the state that hire paramedics as a priority. So, many, many times when the civil service lists open up, they'll take a number of paramedics quite quickly, and they're almost impossible to backfill for many of the reasons I already discussed, but it's difficult. And to, to exacerbate that situation now, what hospitals have found is that they've, they've changed the regulations in the state to allow the hospital, to allow paramedics to do a lot of the services that nurses could do previously. And so, hospitals pay paramedics, excuse me, nurses about $80 an hour, that's about the going rate, and paramedics customarily make about $30, $35 an hour. And so, now that they're able to use paramedics in lieu of nurses in places like Cambridge Health Alliance or East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, it's a great value for them to pay a paramedic $50 an hour as opposed to pay a nurse $80. But I can't afford to pay them $50 an hour because I'm all governed by 65% of all the revenue we receive is either, is, is provided by either state or federal reimbursement sources, Medicare, Medicaid. So, I just want to stop there because I've been talking a lot.
So, I have one more question. Maybe this is to Chief Bright, a combination of both of you. So, in a horrible situation where Revere Fire responds immediately, okay, and an ambulance can't get there for another 15 minutes, we have our firefighters there staying with the patient, we, we get another call, we send more staff there, we're waiting for ambulances there. What is the backup plan? Does another, ambulances from another city come? Or do you, do you just page over the two-way radio and say, "We don't have anyone"?
If, I mean, sometimes there'll be three ambulances in the city at once, but we'll have eight, eight medicals going on at once. So, in that case, I know Cataldo will be reaching out to our neighbors to try to get another ambulance to come in at that point.
Because it will also, because it exhausts our crew that's on staff too, right? Because, you know, I don't, I guess the question is, worst-case scenario, if we exhaust all our staff and, and say a two-hour period based on waiting times, what is the backup plan? That's what I'm concerned about.
You're talking about the fire staff?
Yeah. Everyone's on call.
We call in for mutual aid for coverage. Last week, we had three fires going on at once, and we had a multiple alarm fire on Howard Street, three alarm fire going, and we had caught two other fires during that fire that were put out by our surrounding communities, who were staffing our stations at the time.
And I appreciate what, what the EMT workers do and the firefighters and, you know, having conversations and having the opportunity to ask questions is very beneficial because not only does it give us information, and a lot of us who are residents are asking us questions, "Well, this happened to this one," at least we can speak to the issue. In addition, the viewers on TV get valuable information from you guys. So, thank you, and I appreciate your time for coming up here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to clarify one thing here for the viewing audience. Revere Fire Department does a tremendous job out there. There's no problem with the fire department. I've been traveling with the fire department, unfortunately, for a couple of months now, back and forth, back and forth. And they're right on top of everything. And to the credit of Cataldo, I understand their problem. As a matter of fact, if you go by the, the ambulance station on American Legion Highway, you'll see a sign in the window that says "Help" on it, okay? So, they're doing everything they can to get this whole problem resolved. I, I don't know what the answer is, I'm not a medical technician, but I can tell you this, that every time that I've called them, Revere Fire shows up within minutes, okay? The thing that concerns me right now is places like Oak Island and the Point of Pines, heavy traffic in the summertime, in the wintertime, snow, ice, very difficult to travel on, I don't care what type of a machine you have. So, my concern right now is to, maybe we have to come up with some more money. I don't know. I don't know how that works. That's up to the, you know, the city and the different departments to sit down. But I know this, we have to do something, okay? And I experienced that at one time too. I think there was a, maybe a 10-minute delay in Cataldo showing up, okay? And I understand their problem. I was in the hospital in Wakefield, I wanted to come home at one point. It took them seven hours to get an ambulance to transport me from there to Revere, okay? You would think, and I thought at the time it was very unreasonable. In fact, I complained about it, but I was 100% wrong, okay? Our fire department is doing a great job. I think Cataldo was trying to do their job. I would like to see a piece of apparatus within a little closer to the outline areas like Oak Island and the Point of Pines and maybe places up in North Revere, okay? That's something that I would like to see happen, and I hope that the Cataldo can sit down with the chief and maybe go over this. Maybe there's a way to solve this problem with some more monies coming in. I mean, people out there, particularly, we all know that five, the first five minutes are critical, and to get apparatus there should be our main point right now, and to get the right type of apparatus. Am I correct when I say there are two different types of vehicles that would go to, depending on the, the condition of the accident?
Yes, Counselor, that's correct. So, we have advanced life support vehicles and basic life support vehicles, and we try to deploy those based on patient condition at the time of call or what the chief complaint is. So, if a call comes in as a, you know, gunshot, you know, somebody's been shot, of course, that's advanced life support. If someone, if a call comes in that somebody fell down a flight of stairs two days ago and they called their, called their physician, and the physician says, you know, "Get up to the emergency room," some of those folks call 911, and that's not a life-threatening emergency, that's a basic life support emergency. And that's exactly the type of call where, you know, the person could wait 10 or 12 minutes, even though they did call 911, but the patient would be transported to the hospital using basic life support under, you know, less, you know, severe instances. That's how we would handle that sort of call. And the things that you mentioned about staffing of vehicles in remote locations and response times, you're right, the traffic and the conditions in the, in the, in this geography during certain parts of the day are tremendous and difficult. So, you know, in the past, we had a vehicle out at Point of Pines for a number of years before they condemned, to condemn the station. For us, open and based locations is, is difficult in this, in this current environment with the environmental conditions and the zoning conditions and everything that's required to garage ambulances, it's very, very difficult to overcome those obstacles. But where the fire department and our company can partner for garage locations, we might be able to put vehicles and cohabitate with the, with the, with the Revere Fire Department, we would certainly consider that. That's not something, something that we've actually always been open to, that's how we ended up in Point of Pines. Unfortunately, the facility didn't accommodate us for the future because it was in such disrepair. But, you know, absolutely something that is, is, it's a good plan. I mean, we, we come from one spot, they come from a whole lot more.
You, you may or may not be aware of it, I'm not sure, but I'm sure the chief is aware of it, of course. We're opening down there in July, a three-bay station.
Yes.
Maybe that's something we should look at, you know? It's going to be there to service the water rescue unit, the third bay. Maybe it's a bay that's large enough to service both units at certain times. I don't know. Chief would know the answer to that.
Yeah. We can have conversation, I can tell you that, that bay is made to put the fireboat down there, the size of the fireboat. You know, there won't be room for anything else in that bay.
It won't hold the EMT?
No.
No, okay. That's something I wanted to clarify.
You know, these are things we will be, you know, for instance, during the summertime when we have the, you know, the sand sculpting competition, we always make sure we have some ambulances down that way, and if we have city, certain city events going on where we know there's going to be a pretty good public assembly, then we try, Cataldo's always very gracious about granting us an ambulance to stand by at events. So, we do try to.
Yeah, and there's certain, there's certain conditions as well. The Sand Castle event, like really, you know, when we've got inclement weather that's, I mean, severe, we have a deployment plan, we have a posting plan to put vehicles in opportune spots to be able to lessen response times and create greater availability. And then, as we've referred to earlier, the three or four fires during the day, in an instance like that, we're actually dedicating in many cases, depending on how many alarms are hit, individual ambulances to each fire, to each fire location to support the firefighter as well as deploying an incident support unit that's capable of providing rehab to the firefighters as well.
Fire Department's doing a great job, I think, okay? So, I'm not criticizing the Fire Department, and I'm not criticizing Cataldo either. I would just like to see some type of an arrangement here where fire and, and the ambulance service can get together and maybe come to a solution where we can have engineers, ambulances showing up more times than not, you know, opportune times. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Gentlemen, thank you. You know, I know, I know you all very well, I know your staff all very well from both, both parts. If there's anybody can justify the fire department's actions and their response time, I, you know, over the last 40 years, when my wife was in trouble, three minutes the most, Revere Fire, and ambulance always showed up maybe two minutes after that, after the stabilization. But my wife is very, very ill, and both parties knew, knew her very well. And, but what I want to ask is, how many base ambulances do we have stationed in Revere? Those, and the ones that are in that, so two ambulances and one life. Now, what happens if those three are tied up? Who do we call in from?
So, I'm going to go into the operations section. So, my name's Robert White, I'm the Senior Director of Operations. When those three ambulances are out, so if the two ambulances go out and the fly car goes out and Chelsea is available, we'll send them to Broadway, 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 Chelsea, Broadway, Revere, and they sit there. The same thing happens with the Chelsea fly car, they'll come down, if the ALS truck is out here, they'll come down and sit at Broadway, Broadway. If those trucks aren't available, then we bring Lynn down and they sit in the Point of Pines so that they, or Point of Pines and the Linway, or they'll come down and they'll sit on 107, to cover both until those Revere trucks come back. We always make sure that we have coverage. If those two cities aren't available, then Malden will come down and sit at Linden Square. You can drive by any of those locations, especially during our busy times, and see a truck, maybe even myself, sitting in Linden Square. I'm a paramedic, I have ALS gear, I did three calls this afternoon. And just to address, you know, the, getting the paramedic to the scene on those critical calls, the chief and I started a pilot program here in Revere that we, we started in our North Shore Division to kind of try it. We put the paramedic in a Ford Explorer with gear because what we found is, the paramedics were getting tied up on those calls where somebody had neck pain for three days, and they're transporting to the Brigham and Women's Hospital, and then the sick person really comes in. So, what we did was, we put the paramedics in Revere and Chelsea in fly cars so that they're not, they don't have to take those patients to the hospital unless they're really sick. So, a lot of times, we have care at the scene with the fire department, and it's a paramedic providing care that to that patient, it's kind of, if you go back to the emergency days, the reason I got in, right? Johnny and Gage showed up, they started their IVs, they stabilized the patient, and then the ambulance showed up. We're not wasting any time by doing that, but what we're doing is we're combating the staffing issues that are happening. And Dennis didn't say it, but I will, because I've done it, and I've been sitting there. We all know that the nurses have staffing problems too. That affects the ambulance. When we bring the patients into Mass General and we got to wait an hour in triage, and they're not turning us around in 20 minutes, we lose that ambulance for an hour. While I have the microphone, because I got to steal it away from these two guys, I want to go over this report.
We're going to survive.
I got to put on my glasses because I'm old. So, on the very front page, this is just a, a quick recap. All I did was October, the month of October of 2023, and each box kind of represents one week. So, the very top left-hand box, it says, "Priority one." That's where somebody, we do that EMD process, and it requires a lights and sirens response. Priority two is, it's a cold response. That means the symptoms have been going on for a while, and we can't justify responding lights and sirens down Broadway at 2:30 in the afternoon when the kids are getting out. But the fire department does go to make sure the patient is stable and meets that EMD. So, yeah, our ambulances are going to sit with traffic, and that's, that's a nationwide standard. So, you'll notice that just in Week One of October 1st, there were 217 hot responses. Of those, only 104 of them were transported, 113 were not transported. What we're seeing is, in the city of, all of our cities, it's not just Revere, people are going to waiting rooms. I had a conversation with Dr. Roberts from North Shore Medical Center at Salem. He goes, "We're going to hurt you because we're going to hire paramedics." But he goes, "We're also killing you because our waiting room wait is 12 hours." And people see ambulances coming through the door, wheeling their patients back, so the patient thinks to themselves, "I've been here five hours, he's been here 12 hours, I'm going to go to my house and call an ambulance because that's my golden ticket." I'll say on TV, it's not, because you're going back to the waiting room when we bring you back, because your complaint doesn't deserve to go straight back. Even when it does, we're there for 45 minutes to an hour and a half waiting to unload a patient on some days. So, you can just look at that, you'll see that our average response time, I'm not denying, I'll be the first one to admit, because I've been at the Holiday Inn waiting for an ambulance for somebody that drank too much. They drove down from New Hampshire, they drank, they didn't, they wanted an ambulance to bring them to the hospital so they could get some help, and I waited 14 minutes. But what I did do is, I got there and I relieved the engine so that they could get back in service, and then I just took the patients by those, made sure they were stable, and I, you know what? I told my ambulance, "Shut off your lights and sirens, don't get hurt, don't hurt anybody, I'll see you when you get here." That happens all day long. We have four supervisors out in vehicles, and two supervisors, myself and then Danny Randall's out there as well, that we all have equipment and will go to calls and make sure the patient's stable or begin treatment until they get there. The ALS fly cars, there's two of them in this area, so very rarely, yeah, it might take 15 minutes for an ambulance to get there, but there's always a supervisor or paramedic 90% of the time. There's going to be those outside calls. So, the next thing I did, and on Page Two, I'm just going to go over Page Two because the rest of them are just the weeks and the graphs that follow, but if you look at Page Two, this is another problem, right? Everybody's calling 911 for calls that don't need to be 911. I worked in Revere when I started back at Cataldo in 1999, and when people call an ambulance, most of the time, they needed it. If you look at that very first column, on Sunday at 10 o'clock in the morning, between 10 and 11, there were eight 911 requests in the city of Revere just for an ambulance, right? That's insane, because when you look at it, number one, I had to come up with eight ambulances, but now I got, all right, maybe four of them are transported. Well, remember, Revere's got two to three. Yes, we pull in more, but eight times in that hour, and there's a bunch of those that go on. Sometimes we go even higher than that. If you look at Wednesday, actually, Tuesday was my next, or Monday was my next column, between 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM, there were nine requests for ambulance in that same hour. So, those are the times we're going to have extended delays. We don't have extended delays on the first call, second call, or third call. We have extended delays when we're up around 6, 7, 8, and 9, because we're trying to get ambulances to clear, and we're trying to get ambulances out of the hospital. And then, the biggest thing to remember, so if you look at Wednesday, at 7:00 at night, yeah, there was only three, but the reason I circled that is because at 8:00, there were six more requests. So, in that two-hour timeframe, there was nine requests for ambulances. We're transporting to Boston Medical Center today from North Shore Road, they were transporting to St. Elizabeth's on a cold, because that's where the patient wanted to go, so now they're not using their lights, they're not using their siren, and they're going from North Shore Road in Revere to St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Boston at quarter past 5:00 at night. and they're going from North Shore Road in Revere to St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Boston at quarter past 5:00 at night. When do you think I'm going to see that ambulance back? I'm not. You can go down to, yeah, there's going to be days where your ambulance might be down. It doesn't mean it's unstaffed or Revere's uncovered. We send other ambulances in. There's going to be these times that until we have enough staff, and I'm going to praise Dennis Cataldo because he does, did everything about raising our rates, doing our own EMT programs, doing our own paramedic programs to train our own staff. But when you have nine calls in an hour and then your ambulances are sitting in hospitals because they don't have staff either, that's what, that's where the problem falls. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're not finished.
You can always get in touch with us.
Counselor Sivestri?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the leeway. I think this question would be for, for Mr. Cataldo or maybe yourself. And, and I appreciate the explanation because it, it kind of like a nine-line medevac in the, in the military, right? If you're not losing eye, limb, sight, or death, you're not getting an ambulance or a helicopter. So I can appreciate that explanation. And I know this is going to take way more than just Cataldo ambulance in the Revere Fire Department, but is there, has there ever been a, a reach out to the state fire list? The guys that are waiting on the state fire list to maybe get into the EMT? And I know that's only like a, a matter of time before they're poached, but I think it's maybe like a, I'm going to compare it to a minor league, right? If, if you're, if you're continuing to fill off that list and they continue to leave, it would, it would be like a step?
So we don't usually try to poach from the fire list. They, they kind of have their own, you know, prioritization for who's in the list and how they get distributed to different departments, whether EMTs or paramedics. But almost all Fire Departments now require their firefighters to be EMTs. So it's kind of a universal. But we have, we have about 800 employees right now in the field. Of that 800, I'm going to say probably 300 of them at least are firefighters in some capacity, whether they're paramedics or EMTs. So we do work very closely with the different Fire Departments and the communities we're in to hire firefighters to, to work in our industry. It's a great, obviously, you know, it's a great second gig for a lot of folks because we're 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You know, you don't, you want to work Sunday overnight, you want to work Monday day. You know, whatever you want to work, you could just work. You know, there's pretty much availability now around the clock. So we do try and be creative in how we advertise to those folks for part-time work and particularly firefighters. And again, we have a ton of them that work for us, especially the paramedic. We actually have a lot of paramedics of our, a number of our paramedics are, are also firefighters as well. So yeah, I mean, we, we try exhaust all efforts to, to get staff, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think this question is for the chief. Chief, if you don't mind, is, I know Cataldo's been here for quite some time in, in the city. Are they the only contracted EMT company that we contract in the city for the city of Revere?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I'm not sure how other cities do it, to be honest with you. Does it make sense to also bring in, and I'm not looking to take business away from you either, okay? I understand, but, you know, for the safety of our residents, does it make sense to also bring in maybe another company? I don't know how many companies there are out there. But does it also, would it make sense to bring in a company as a secondary EMT company just to cover the, the overflow that, you know, and, and reduce the wait time? I can't see why, you know, that hasn't been thought of or maybe not considered. I should say, if it's not being considered, why not? And, you know, if you can expand on that.
It, it has been considered. You know, we renegotiated a contract last year with Cataldo.
Okay.
There was another provider who was interested. They'd be more than willing probably to, to, you know, we could probably procure an ambulance from them, but it probably costs upwards of close to $1 million for that, one ambulance. Cataldo perform, you know, does what they do for us and, and it's, it's, it's for nothing, basically. There's no, no money on it.
Okay, so, so to get another company to come in, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not.
Dedicate saying ambulance 24/7 here, someone will do it, probably, if you can get them, but it'll probably be around a million dollars for that service.
Okay.
Close to it, $750 to $1 million, somewhere around there, yeah?
Okay.
That's the answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you, Mr. Cataldo, Mr. White, Chief, thank you all for being here. And this will be a question, I think, from Mr. Cataldo, but I know Mr. White kind of alluded to some of the stuff. But obviously, as you said, this, this issue is not happening in a vacuum. You know, it's staffing shortages nationwide. We talk about traffic, traffic in greater Boston in general, not just Revere is awful. So my question is, are there other communities? Do you hear the same complaints, no, I shouldn't say complaints, but the same concerns from other municipalities in your service area? And are there, is there anything that other communities are doing that we aren't and that we could implement to try to, or is it not?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a community issue. It's just, it's the, it's the, the sheer magnitude of the call volume now is it related, and how it relates to the available resources. And all the things that, you know, as, as Robert alluded to, the nursing shortage, the traffic, as you allude to, all plays a part in the availability, time on task. You know, if you could, if you could turn ambulances around quicker and make them more available, you need less of them, you know? And the more time they're tied up, the longer it takes. And so one thing that we've seen, and although it's kind of in the background, is the hot, what impact the hospital closures have had in the availability of ambulances because not only are the vehicles going further away, but the number of patients that are in those emergency rooms also, also is a very much a predictor of how, what the delays will be. So if you take like the community of Lynn, and I'll use that as a, as a, as an easy one, you know, they closed Lynn Union Hospital and redirected all the patients in Lynn now to Salem Hospital. But that also impacts all the communities around them because the number of resources that are, that get pulled from Lynn to go sit in Salem Hospital reduces the amount of resources that are available to backfill back into a place like Revere. And so, you know, I'm not sure that anybody's doing anything that has helped the situation, but I could tell you there's been a lot done that you can, you can use as qualifying data as to why there's less availability of vehicles. So, yeah, I mean, you think about, there used to be a Winter Hospital, there used to be a Malden Hospital, there used to be a New England Memorial Hospital, there used to be a Waldham Hospital, there used to be, you know, there used to be a Somerville Hospital. I mean, think about Somerville, 100,000 square feet and 3 and 1/2 square miles, they don't have a hospital. You know? Look at how many, you know, every single time you send an ambulance to a patient and the patient has to go to the hospital, they have to leave the city of Revere. Right? And if it's, if that, if that ride becomes longer and that time at the hospital becomes longer, you've got a backfill. And you know, and the troublesome part of it is the economics of it, as, as Counselor Visconti kind of alluded to and kind of the expense. We only get reimbursed for transportation if we provide transportation, right? So if we have two ambulances, three ambulances, four ambulances here, every single ambulance, literally, this is not a lie in any shape, way, or form, a basic life support ambulance right now is about $1 million a year to operate. An advanced life support ambulance right now is about $1 million 3 to operate. So when you're moving, juggling those amount of resources around and you don't get the utilization, you're not also generating revenue to pay for them. So when it, when it comes into backup ambulances, let's just add another one or put another one in the contract, it's not always, there's not always funding available for whatever measure to be able to pay for them, you know?
And to that end, Madam President, one more kind of question, more for the chief, sorry. But, you know, as we talk about funding and to Counselor Visconti's point, you know, the city got millions and millions of dollars from ARPA. And, you know, could this have been something, did the mayor ever approach you on, you know, we, we knew there were staffing shortages in EMS during COVID and coming out of COVID? And, you know, was that ever a topic of conversation, to invest some ARPA dollars into beefing up EMS services?
I don't think the ARPA money, we had a lot of conversations about beefing our apparatus, fire apparatus, which, you know, two pumps and a truck. That was quite, quite a big number. We appreciate that. That's going to go a long way to help, helping the Fire Department when they finally come in in about two years. But there was really no conversations regarding using the ARPA money to enhance the EMS response during that time. And again, like, like, again, I think like Dennis tried to, it's really not a question. It's like an industry-wide problem. We've been, we've been trying different things. I mean, with the new contract, we, we, we have more resources. With the pilot program, we're keeping a paramedic who can respond quickly to these incidents and not have to be tied up at a hospital with the transport. So we've been trying things. But as far as getting, you know, throwing another million dollars at a different company to bring an ambulance, I'm not so sure that's going to be the cure-all.
I was just going to say.
I mean, the city of Everett went, the Fire Department, they went into the ambulance business. So they hired a bunch of new firefighters to be on an ambulance, one ambulance, okay? So that's really not going to solve their problem over there. And I would imagine if they had a contract with Cataldo, they're going to probably be getting less resources because they're going into the ambulance business. So it's complicated.
That makes sense. And what I'm kind of getting is that it's, it's not a problem that we can just throw money at and invest in. It's, it's, there are just a lot of factors at play there. So thank you, gentlemen, for being up here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cugliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Excellent question, Counselor Serino, about the ARPA funds. Did, this is just, I wasn't going to ask this, but did the Fire Department, or for that matter, any ambulance services receive any funding from, from ARPA?
Yeah, so, so we haven't received any money from ARPA. We actually had a, we actually had a funding request at the state level through the Mass Ambulance Association for funding that was a, per, the way we had devised it was per vehicle. So every ambulance company has a, a specific number of vehicles that they license every year. So that license, that number of vehicles could be tied to a subsidy or an ARPA funding request. We got, we got pulled off the table on the, on the last round and never received any monies through the state. In fact, I'll just bring this up because I guess it's a chance to, to point out how forgotten we are at some point. The only relief we got through the entire COVID period from the state of Massachusetts was we got a 30% increase in our Medicaid rates for 90 days. And we lose 35% on every patient we transport. That's what we got. No additional PPE, no additional funding, no additional support at all. And the amount of work that we did at the state level to keep the health system working was tremendous, tremendous, you know? And then, I won't get into testing and vax because we did 2.1 million of those.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I have a few more questions. I'm sorry, that's, I, I only asked that. It just boggles my mind that we didn't put more money into public safety at that time because we relied on you so heavily. I feel like I should apologize. I know it's not my fault, but I also, a quick question about the calls. At what point do you ask for mutual aid? Is it more than three calls because there's only three vehicles? Or how does, how does that work?
I'll bring the microphone down again for the shortcut. If we don't have an ambulance available, right? So a call will come in, our dispatcher will look at what the, the call is for. If it's a sick person that's been, had nausea, vomiting, and diarrhea for four days, we're not going to call and mutually aid for that. There's no reason to take somebody else out of another town for somebody that's had symptoms for four days. We'll wait for the ambulance to come out of the CHA Everett. If the call comes in as a priority one, patient has chest pain, patient has trouble breathing, patient's in cardiac arrest, and we don't have an ambulance immediately available to go and nobody answers our first call, then we will call usually action out of Winter.
Thank you. And Chief, you alluded to this, you talked about Everett hiring, going into the ambulance business. I guess that was one of my questions is, has Revere ever thought of doing that as a way to help with, with call times?
We've, we've thought about it. We used to run an ambulance years ago and, again, it didn't, you know, we got out of the ambulance business. You know, if we, if we really wanted to do something like that, we'd have to hire a whole nother department and to be able to staff like 10 ambulances around the clock. And I, I'm not so sure that's, that's the direction we want to go.
Thank you, Chief. So it just, again, it just seems, again, it's not a Revere issue. This is an everywhere issue. And, and I just, you know, I filed this motion, and again, I appreciate you guys so much for coming up. We got a lot of great information tonight, and I hope that the public is watching this and, and has more of an understanding. So I hope that we can get those staff levels up ASAP. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Counselor. We're going to place, thank you, gentlemen, for coming up tonight. We're going to place this on file.
Counselor, item number four. Lauren Buck, Chief of Health and Human Services, will appear before the City Council to provide an update on the overdose outreach program. Yeah. Lauren Buck, Chief of Health and Human Services. So I am here to talk about the state of the overdose outreach program for the city of Revere. As all of you know, we lost Chris Alba about two months ago now. He was the city's main outreach worker, harm reduction specialist. He's really an irreplaceable presence in the harm reduction outreach worker community, not just for Revere, but for the city, oh, sorry, for the, the state, and really the country. I knew Chris for two, for three years now, and I considered him not only a coworker, but a friend. And I know many of you knew him a lot longer than that. And his loss is multiplied for, for you all who knew him a lot longer than I did. So, you know, I will talk about what post overdose is, and then I will talk about what we, some changes we were implementing prior to Chris's, Chris's passing, and then some things that we've done since Chris's passing, recognizing that we need to continue that really important work in his memory and for the residents of our community. So what is post overdose? It's a part of the SUDHI office. It's a small part of it. It basically is a program where we receive data from first responders, like Cataldo, who was just here, and Revere PD. And we use that data to, to do outreach to people who've recently overdosed. It's an evidence-based approach that takes into account that someone who has recently overdosed it, overdosed, has a higher risk of overdosing again. And so we compile a list of addresses of places that had an overdoses, overdose on a weekly basis. And we try to do outreach two times a week if we do have any overdoses that week. And we try to scatter them from a different times of day. Sometimes it's easier to catch people at after work hours. Sometimes it's easier to catch businesses during workout, work hours. So we try to scatter that on those two types of, on those two types of shifts. You can imagine that many of the door knocks, and really many times it is a door knock or going into a business, sometimes we don't have a lot of success, sometimes you don't get anyone at the door. And that's why we try to continue going to at least, going to the address at least twice to make sure that we try to connect with someone. Sometimes you can connect with a person, the person who's overdosed. Sometimes you can connect with the family, friends. Sometimes it's a business. And so then you can try to talk to a manager or staff who might frequently witness overdoses. Then finally, we provide a Narcan kit and we do education about how to use Narcan and how to identify an overdose. We've kind of beefed up our Narcan kits recently. And so they not only include two doses of Narcan, they now include a CPR mask, fentanyl test strip, and some information, some like cards with phone numbers, information about resources that someone could use. So prior to Chris's passing, we had hired a part-time outreach worker to help support the work because we recognized that the need for boots-on-the-ground outreach is, is very important. We also applied to be part of the community Narcan program through the state BSAS program. Previous to this, we had been getting Narcan through other nonprofit agencies, and we recognized that we wanted to be able to have, the SUDI Department through the city of Revere wanted to be able to have access to Narcan itself. And so we applied for that program prior to Chris's passing. We also started the opioid abatement working group, and we kind of formalized that, which is a different type of work, but all related, which is, that group is managed through the substance use and harm reduction program manager, and it's a part of us receiving opioid settlement funding. And so after Chris passed away, again, we wanted to make sure that we continued the work. So we quickly got in touch with the state to make sure our enrollment in the community Narcan program was processed. And that means that, and, and we were able to receive our first shipment of Narcan. And so there was, you know, that was on board right away. And we've continued to do overdose outreach through a combination of the behavioral health unit at the Fire Department, the SUDI office, and the Public Health Department, all kind of work together to make sure that those, those outreach, those outreaches can happen. We've also continued to meet with the state homelessness liaison to make sure that we can continue to connect people who are either homeless or struggling with substance use to the, to the housing programs that are available at the state. And so that, that connection has continued to be made. We also met with some of the nonprofits in the space health innovation. We also met with some of the nonprofits in the space, Health Innovations, and Healthy Streets, to make sure that when we move forward, we do it in the right way and kind of their, get their expertise about what the next step should be. But again, through all of this process, we've continued to do post overdose outreach because we recognize the importance of, of connecting with people who have recently overdosed. And then finally, just a few weeks ago, we held the first meeting of the opioid abatement working group. And I'll end with just some data. According, this is data from the state of Massachusetts. For 2020, the city of Revere had 21 opioid-related overdose deaths. For 2021, we had 25. For 2022, we had 30. And then according to the city's own internal data, so it could be subject to change, as of October, we have had 16 opioid-related overdose deaths and a total of 101 overdoses in the city.
Thank you. And the councilors, Councilor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Director Buck, for coming up here tonight. As many of you know, this is, both issues are very near and dear to my heart, substance abuse and homelessness. I think they're the two most devastating health issues that we've faced in our lifetime and probably ever in the history of this world. I don't know, and I, and I appreciate all the, you know, keeping Chris's, his memory in, in good faith, but, you know, before Chris passed, there was a, there was a period of time before, between 7:30 and 10:30, I'm going to go to November 1st. Do you know how many overdoses we've had in that timeframe?
Not off the top of my head.
So I'm guessing if you don't know the number of overdoses that we've had in that time, you don't know how many had overdose awareness outreach?
From that time period?
Correct. July 30th to, we'll call it October 31st.
So I, I'll tell you that, you know, every overdose that we've had from this year has gotten outreach. So they have gotten overdose, every, every overdose that they've, that, that has happened during that time period has had overdose outreach.
Okay, so I guess then, who would be doing that outreach? So at, at one point, due to personal issues, we know someone was sidelined in the office. So at one point, the office had three full-time and one part-time employees. Right up until recently, I think it had a little bit over two. After the passing of Chris, we had, please?
Sure.
Thank you. We had one and I guess a half, as you stated. So I know Chris wasn't doing the outreach. Who was doing the outreach at that point?
So prior to Chris's passing, we had three full-time staff and a part-time staff in the, for the SUDI office. So I think what you're referring to is that there was a window of time where we were not receiving data. Remember, we don't, the SUDI office doesn't hold the data, we receive it.
Correct.
And so.
So then if, if, was, was, was data being kept from you? Is that what, I guess, was data being kept from the SUDI office?
So I, I, it's, it's hard, obviously, Council Silvestri, I want to be respectful of, like, personal health information.
No, I, I, listen, we don't have to worry about that certain issue. We have to worry about the overdose and the overdose awareness and the overdose outreach. So I'm, I'm asking a question. We don't have to worry about Mr. Alber, okay? God rest his soul. We have to worry about the people that are coming after Mr. Alber. We have to worry about the thousands that are dying of overdoses a day. 112,000 people have died in Massachusetts just this past year. So I ask you again, one more time, was there outreach being done, and who was doing it? If you're the Director of Health and Human Services, Ms. Buck, and you don't know how many overdoses we have, and you don't know who was doing the outreach, who has the answer to these questions? Because I find that, as we just stated, the two most pressing issues of our public health history are, we have no answers to. That, that's what I guess you're saying.
So as I, as I mentioned, we have had 100, so the last time that I, when I put this together, it was in October, we had 101 overdoses and 16 opioid-related overdose deaths. So we, we do know some numbers.
Who did the outreach to those?
The SUDI department in combination with the BHU department and the Revere police and the public health department when we needed, when we needed to fill it in.
So my next question, according to the Attorney General's office, the city of Revere, up until September of 2023, has received $2,000, $298,642.66. As of date, I think this council has approved $90,000 of those dollars. Can you tell me where the other 208,642,000 is going, where it's going, how it's being spent?
Sure. So obviously, we want to make sure that that money lasts as long as possible, and so we, we have, that money is sitting with the city of Revere. It hasn't been spent yet. It can be allocated in future fiscal years.
Thank you, Ms. Buck.
Councilor Visconti?
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren, for coming up here and answering the questions. Question, how many people do you think that SUDI office needs in order to operate an office like that for the city of Revere and be effective? Okay? You know, in trying to, to do the amount of outreach that you do. But how many people, how many people do you have in that department right now?
So after Chris's passing, we have two full-time SUDI, in the SUDI office, and we still have the part-time outreach worker. So two and a half.
Does, does that satisfy the need for the city?
No, I mean, I think with Chris's passing, we need to, we need to replace, we need to replace the outreach component of that, of that work.
Well, obviously, replacing Chris is, is not an easy task, but above and beyond that is, is, so are you saying that we need two more employees there? What, in your professional opinion, what would you think you would need to, to be able to be effective and make a difference for those people that need that outreach?
So, I mean, I think the most important component of the SUDI work is the boots-on-the-ground outreach work. And so having two, maybe two full-time outreach workers would be, would be a great thing. I think one of the things that we were working towards was to make sure that, you know, Chris was getting two days off a week, you know, like, getting regular hour, getting regular time off, getting, you know, feeling, feeling like he could take some time off during the week and even vacation time. And so, you know, I, I think the priority is, is the outreach component, the boots-on-the-ground. And so potentially, maybe making that more robust is, is important. I, I don't know if I can really tell you an exact number, but.
No, I understand. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that office was its own unit, and it came under your umbrella just recently. Is that my understanding of, of that department? And when did it come into your, your command, let's say?
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year?
July, yeah.
Okay, all right, great.
And that, so that is helping relieve some of, like, the admin duties, so that the admin duties can, we can take over, we have admin staff in the public health department. And so the, the boots-on-the-ground work is, you know, still located in that office.
Great. I, I appreciate that, and hopefully this next administration will, will, will provide you the, the, the funding necessary in this council. Coming up in the next budget season, we'll actually provide you the, the funding necessary to accommodate and, and be effective for the, for those people that need that outreach. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Marbido?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Buck. You had mentioned post overdose outreach. How, how does the city or your department, if you can walk me, walk us through the process of connect, connection? Like, how does one, how does someone, how is that individual contacted by someone who has overdosed, post overdose? How do you contact that person? How do you identify that person? Where do you get their name from? And what is the steps? If you can just walk me through it.
So if there's a name provided or an address, that, that information comes from the first responders that work in the area, including Cataldo Ambulance and Revere Police and Revere Fire. And so those, that information is reviewed, and then the post overdose outreach team that is working that week uses the address, goes to the address and does door knocks or talks to, if it's a business, talks to whoever they can find in charge.
Who is it reviewed by?
The data.
Yeah.
The substance use program manager.
Okay. And how often?
Every week.
Okay. And who, how many people, members are on the post outreach team?
It's usually two people.
Two people?
Yep.
And how many people would you say are listed each week?
It's so variable. Sometimes there are no overdoses. Sometimes there are multiple.
What would you say the average?
Um, I'm not sure of the average per week.
Can you get me that information?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Serena?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Director Buck, for being up here. Could you please tell us, as of today, November, what's today, the 14th, as of November 13th, as of November 13th, how many employees are in SUDI? What are the positions, and who are they, under the actual SUDI department?
Sure. There's a substance use and homelessness program manager, there's a social worker, and a part-time outreach worker.
Who are they, though?
You want names?
The employee, the employees' names, if that.
Are we allowed to say employees' names?
Yeah.
Okay. Carrie Anne Solemy, Nicole Palermo, and the part-time outreach worker is named Wyatt, Wally.
And Nicole is definitely is within SUDI? She's not within another department?
Correct. This year, she was moved out of the other Health and Human Services and put in, full-time in the SUDI office and paid for through, through that, through the opioid abatement and, and other grants. Because we found out through the, her previous work and previous years that the majority of her work was working with homelessness and substance use clients anyway. And so she now sits there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Thank you for coming up here. We're going to place this on file.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Councilor Zamudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, we know the zoning subcommittee met this evening, 5 o'clock. We had several items on the agenda. The first item was C 2305. It was voted out favorably, and I'd ask for a roll call on that.
Roll call.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of the zoning subcommittee? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Marbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers? Yes, Councilor Rizzo is absent. Councilor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zamudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Next up is C 2306, 465 Revere Beach Boulevard. That was held in committee. Next item was C 2307. That was tabled, so it's in committee. And the next was 23219, zoning establishing outdoor dining regulations in the city of Revere. It was voted out favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Roll call. Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Request roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance establishing outdoor dining regulations in the city of Revere? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Marbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo is absent. Councilor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zamudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained.
And one more, item 23246, zoning ordinance further amending the revised zoning ordinance of the city of Revere relative to pre-qualified lots, signage, and driveways. Was also voted out favorably, and I'd ask for a roll call.
As amendment, roll call. Ordered on a second reading. As amendment. Roll call. Oh, sorry. Ordered, ordered on a third and final reading. As amended, roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance establishing, I'm sorry, shall approve an, I'm sorry, shall the city council approve a zoning ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to pre-qualified lots, signage, and driveways as amended? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Marbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo is absent. Councilor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zamudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved as amended.
That concludes my zoning subcommittee report.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the chairman of the Board of Assessors requesting that the city council hold a public hearing for the purpose of adopting the minimum residential factor for FY '24.
Ordered to a public hearing. November, when?
December 4th.
December 4th.
That was, that was what was requested by Richard. Calendar item number 11, communication from the chief of planning and community development requesting an amendment to the revised zoning ordinances of the city of Revere, establishing smart growth overlay districts for the purpose of complying with the MBTA Communities Law.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening, councilors. Tom Skroski, chief of planning, community development for the city of Revere. And, you know, normally with a zoning amendment petition like the one you received tonight, it would go to its public hearing, at which point it'd be customary for me to provide a presentation to the council. Given the time sensitivity, time sensitivity and complexity of this matter, I wanted to present it first in advance of the public hearing so I could answer any questions you have, both tonight, but also between now and the proposed public hearing date, which would be two weeks from today. I did just plug this in to present, I'm not sure if, okay, here we go. See if we can make this work. All right, excellent. So I'm here tonight to discuss our MBTA community reforms that we need to become compliant with the new state law. Just to give you a quick overview, I want to give a primer of the 40R or Smart Growth Program, which is a state program that we're looking to adopt locally to achieve 3A compliance, talk about the connection with 3A or the MBTA Communities Act, tell you why we are choosing 40R for this compliance, and then get into the nitty-gritty of both of the districts. First, the Shirley Avenue District, and then the Green Street District, which is the area that many of you might know as the Lee Trailer Park in its vicinity. We'll answer a few frequently asked questions, both about 40R, but also about the MBTA Communities Act, and then just discuss next steps before this goes to the public hearing and beyond. So 40R, just for a quick primer, was established in 2004 by state legislation. It's called MGL 40R. That's why you'll hear me refer to it as 40R. These districts are intended to encourage housing near public transportation by offering zoning bonuses to property owners who build in 40R districts and offering state financial incentives to cities which adopt 40R districts. The zoning district would be an overlay, meaning the existing underlying zoning would remain in place for both of the districts proposed. To be eligible for this overlay, a project must include at least 20% deed-restricted affordable units or be below a certain size threshold that's determined by the city council. That size threshold can go no larger than 12, but could go much lower than that. And actually, what is proposed in front of you tonight is a threshold of eight. So essentially, anything seven units or below would not require 20% affordable, but any developments that take advantage of 40R, eight or more units would require at least 20% deed-restricted affordable. Although this. Although this is a local zoning district, it's a state model ordinance, which is why the ordinance that was presented to you is a bit complex. It follows a state boilerplate language, and it requires state approvals before the city can adopt the ordinance, and it's currently in the state queue for approvals and will be approved before the public hearing. The connection with 3A or MBTA Communities, this new law requires cities to adopt zoning to allow multifamily housing development by right. So by right means that multifamily housing is allowed without a variance from the ZBA or without a special permit from the City Council. Currently, Riviere is not in compliance with 3A, and I understand that prior to my time, there was a presentation given to the Riviere City Council that stated we were in compliance. At the same time, I was presenting in Pittsburgh while I was still working there, also presenting to my City Council that we are in compliance. When I left, my successor in Pittsburgh had to do the same thing I'm doing tonight, which is tell you we are not in compliance. And that's because initially the law came out, but then the interpretation shifted from the state over time. And most importantly, for our case, the state created a threshold that was called the minimum multifamily unit capacity, and that threshold is 6,135 units by right that our zoning must allow. This doesn't mean we need to have 6,135 units built. It just means that our zoning must allow that much multifamily housing to be developed by right. Our current zoning allows for 4,086 units. We did some pretty in-depth modeling using the state's guidelines. They basically created a model. We put inputs in, and that's the input we got out is 4,000 units roughly. The creation of these 40R districts will bring Riviere into compliance, and as a rapid transit community, we must comply by December 31st, 2023. In other words, before the end of the year. If we're not in compliance, we'll lose eligibility for a variety of state grant programs. These are all the programs listed. And just to give you all some context, just in this year alone, we've received about $6 million from all of these different grant programs. So MassWorks, the Massachusetts Vulnerability, or Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, otherwise known as MVP, the Housing Choice Program, the Mass Downtown Initiative, and I could go on. But, but just to give you a sense of the funded projects that are being funded in this round, there are improvements to Route 60 and Harris Street, the pedestrian crossings, so high school students don't have to walk right in the middle of the street in Route 60. There are some Diamond Creek catchment improvements where Donnie and his team are working on some tide gate enhancements, a Broadway parking plan that we're about to initiate this year, Gibson Park Boatyard remediation improvements, some work to create a new dog park at Fitz Henry Park, and Riviere Works, which is our local workforce development partnership in partnership with TND and the public schools. Just a few of the projects of the $6 million we'd stand to lose if we are not, if we are not in compliance with Mass MBTA Communities Law. So if we're not in compliance, we'll also open ourselves up to civil liability due to state and federal fair housing laws per the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office Advisory, which I included in a letter to you all earlier on Thursday that just indicated a series of different links. One of them was the advisory from the AG's office. So I don't want to, you know, start off with all these scare tactics. We're going to lose this money. We're going to open ourselves up to liability. But I do feel like it's important to be upfront with why we need to come into compliance. I also think, and hopefully as I run through the 40R zones with you, you'll see that what we're proposing are pretty modest enhancements to our existing zoning and ones that I think can have some real benefits to the city. So I want to talk those through in a moment. But one last note, although we would be allowing more housing by right, by right doesn't mean automatic approvals. So state and local rules still apply, building, fire codes, site plan review, utility and drainage requirements, traffic, floodplain considerations, MEPA. They still need to run through the gauntlet of state and local and sometimes federal regulatory burdens. So special permit's just one of those things. So why do we choose 40R? We chose it for three basic reasons. The first of which is that it encourages smart growth near transit. We picked a district Shirley Avenue that's proximate to two Blue Line stations. The Green Street neighborhood is a half mile from the Beauchamp Station and is currently on underutilized land. And ultimately, smart growth involves requiring less parking and more dense development closer to transit. And I know a lot of what we've discussed as a community over the last few months related to development has been the tie-in with development and traffic. And if we are requiring less cars per development and there are no places to put those cars, ostensibly we would be seeing less automobile traffic on our roadways. And that's certainly the case in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, which I know many on this council have approved developments without any parking requirements. And actually, if you go down in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, for a neighborhood that's had that much development, you don't see all that parking and traffic challenges because ultimately, a lot of those developments, people don't drive. And that's what we're looking to encourage here. So number one, smart growth. And number two, affordability. And I'm not going to belabor the point, because I know I've spoken with you all before about how we are not at our 10% subsidized housing inventory threshold. We're currently at 7.2%, dropping every day with every new market rate development. And this would allow us for another tool, again, more of a carrot than a stick. This is not a requirement. This is an option and a density bonus that would allow for the production of more affordable housing. And thinking about our master plan, I think there's two ways that this ties in really well with that. The first of which is, in our master plan, it's noted that there were calls in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood for an affordable housing protection overlay. This isn't quite that, but this is a district that would encourage more affordable housing, which is something that's called out specifically in our master plan. Our master plan also calls for the protection of what you call naturally occurring affordable housing. This is affordable housing that's not protected by deed, but is affordable for the average working person. And ultimately, in the Lee Trailer Park, when those 100 trailers were removed, that is what we call naturally occurring affordable housing. It was cheap for a working person, and hopefully we could use this as an opportunity to replace some of those units that were there once upon a time. And lastly, it does provide some good financial benefits for the city. So if we get a 40R district approved by the state, we receive a zoning incentive payment of up to $600,000 just for getting the district approved in the first place. And then above and beyond that, we would receive density bonus payments up to $3,000 per bonus unit of housing allowed above and beyond the existing zoning. So in Green Street, in that district, currently zoning, housing is not allowed by right. So for every unit of housing in that district approved and built, we would receive $3,000 per unit of housing. And in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, we would see a similar thing, but it would function a lot like CIT, where basically we would get $3,000 per every unit above and beyond what's allowed in the existing zoning. And the reason I like this is if we are moving and we, we are required to allow more housing by right, we actually lose some of our CIT funding because our CIT funding is derived from projects that are approved by special permit or are approved by a variance. By virtue of this change we're making, we would lose some CIT funding, but in this case, using 40R, we would have state financial incentives to help, to help make up for that, that loss. And now just to get into the two districts briefly. The Shirley Avenue District is essentially the existing general business district going up north to the Wonderland Plaza. In terms of what uses would be allowed by right in this district, all the uses that you see are, are what would be allowed in the district, both residential and commercial uses, as long as they're not 51% or more of the development, they can be included as a mixed-use project. But what you see here, all the ones in blue are all the ones that are already allowed in the underlying district. So basically, in the Shirley Avenue District, we're not changing any of the use allowances. We're just going to be changing dimensional considerations, which I'll talk about here. So looking at the existing underlying zoning, we basically would be adding an additional potential story of, of housing. We would be reducing setback requirements just from 20 to 15 and reducing the minimum lot area from 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet, and then finally increasing the floor area ratio from 1.5 to 2. And just for, you know, folks in the audience who might not understand FAR, floor area ratio, it's basically a ratio that considers what you can build based off of what the lot size is there today. So imagine we have a 5,000 square foot lot. A floor area ratio of 1.5 would allow for up to 7,500 square feet of development. So the floor area ratio of 2 would allow for 10,000 square feet, which is the original lot size, 5,000 times 2. And then parking is the other major piece of relief offered here. So for one bedrooms, as opposed to what's today allowed, 1.5 spaces for a one bedroom, 1.75 for a two, and two for three and above, this bumps that down slightly to 1 for a one bedroom, 1.5 for a two bedroom, and 1.75 for three and above. But as you all know, and as you've approved many projects in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, many of them often are approved without any parking requirements altogether. So although this is a little bit more flexible than what's allowed in our zoning, it's actually a little bit more rigorous than many of the developments that have been approved in that district. And then in the Green Street District, we're basically looking at the area in and around the Lee Trailer Park, moving up to Riviere Beach Parkway. And in this district today, it's the TED district, so residential is not allowed by right. It's only allowed by PUD or Planned Unit Development Special Permit from the City Council. So here are the sampling of uses that are allowed in the TED district today. I'm not going to read them, but you can review them just looking at the screen here, but a lot of industrial and commercial uses primarily. And then in terms of what's allowed by right, again, with the proposed district, it would allow housing development by right and a few mixed-use commercial developments that, you know, as opposed to Shirley Avenue where you had a bit more of a laundry list because it's a big commercial district. These would be uses that are more compatible with a, a smaller development of, of this scale, kind of a way, not a, a commercial district in its own right, but things like a general office use, restaurant, retail, neighborhood retail, health club, a brewery, something that's compatible with the uses around it. And in terms of dimensional requirements, again, I can't really compare apples and oranges here because housing's not allowed by right, but what I am comparing it with is what would be allowed as a planned unit development, a PUD from the City Council. So in a PUD, you could have up to 200 feet. In terms of a height limit, this would cap it at 60 feet. And then just across the board here, you see more or less the similar dimensional requirements than you saw in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood with two big exceptions. Here, the minimum lot area, instead of being 10,000 square feet, is proposed to be, or instead of being 5,000 square feet like Shirley Avenue, is proposed to be 10,000 square feet, and the floor area ratio is just 1.5 as opposed to 2. And then lastly, the parking requirements, basically any of the commercial uses that we added, we mirrored the parking requirements that exist today in our ordinance with the multifamily. That's really the only thing that's different. And again, it basically just mirrors the existing Shirley Avenue GB district. So it's not quite as aggressive in the parking considerations as Shirley Avenue, but a little bit less than the two-bedroom or two parking spaces per unit requirement. And just in terms of some frequently asked questions that I've heard in the last couple weeks, number one with MBTA communities, a lot of folks asked, well, didn't Suffolk Downs make us MBTA communities compliant? But unfortunately, that wasn't the case because Suffolk Downs was a special permit development that had to be approved by the City Council. So again, the only, the only allowances were given in the MBTA community law are what our zoning allows by right, not by special permit. And in that case, it was a special permit. I also was asked a lot of questions about what about development along the beach? For the most part, development along the beach was counted in, in our minimum multifamily unit capacity, with the exceptions of developments basically north of Riviere Street. And the reason is, there is a whole series of land throughout the, the state that is considered environmentally excluded land. And in this case, that's land within 100 feet of, of the waterway because basically the whole idea of this law is to make it easier to build housing. And in these cases, you know, in these two RC1 districts north of Riviere Street, the City Council and the city of Riviere have made it very easy to build, but because these properties are located in environmentally difficult areas, MEPA and other state regulatory agencies have made it very difficult to build, and for good reason. These are developments right next to the beach. So those developments were excluded from our calculation. We did quite a bit of lobbying at the state level to try to get it included, and they, they weren't listening. And I, I guess I understand their perspective because they called it a bit of a slippery slope problem. If they gave us, you know, those allowances, then every other community would come calling. So that was, you know, what we heard. So we moved forward, just looking at what we had, how we could come into compliance. And how do we arrive at that 6,135 unit capacity? It's 25% of our municipal housing stock as measured in 2020. That's how the law was interpreted by the state. What districts were included? Here are all the districts that were included that helped us get to a little over 4,000 units. You could see, you know, we have some areas, the RC District along Squire Road, Broadway. We have the Shirley Avenue District that exists today, did help us get to the number we are today, but we needed to grow it a little bit more. And then a lot of our RC2 district and the Wonderland Transit Overlay Districts all helped us get into compliance, as well as the GB District closer to Beauchamp. So some dimensional questions. I heard about the actual ordinance that I have presented in front of you on Shirley Avenue and Green Street. I heard this from some folks in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood. I live in a residential neighborhood. Will I be seeing six-story developments next door? And I would just say, just because the height requirement, the height limit is set at six stories, that's just one of many dimensional characteristics that you need to meet in order to build. You also need to be, meet things like frontage, minimum lot size, setbacks, FAR and parking, and just a few examples of some projects in the neighborhood. So this is on Beach Street. It's a project that, or it's a property that has 85 feet of frontage. 100 is required, so this would not be eligible under the 40R district. If you go right next door, you have a lot that is 51 feet of frontage, 3,900 square feet of the 5,000 minimum, so this lot would also not be eligible. And looking at this entire block between Beach and Kimball, the vast majority of the lots actually wouldn't be eligible. So your average residential part of this neighborhood wouldn't actually be able to avail themselves of this 40R district. The one lone exception is here at, at the tip, at 1485 North Shore Road, which is where 32 units were approved by the ZBA in 2023. But that's what was approved by the ZBA with a variance. If you take a look at what this district would allow for, you'll actually see it would allow for a much smaller and less intensive development. So that development, 32 units, had the frontage and the minimum lot size required, but it had no setbacks. It had an FAR of almost four, and mind you, in this district, it would only be allowed to have up to two. They had only two parking spaces, which again, the Shirley Avenue District proposed in front of you would have parking requirements associated with it, and it has 0% affordability. So if this project were to apply to the 40R district, it would not comply for all those reasons, and it wouldn't be able to utilize this. So it would still have to go through the traditional route of seeking a variance if it, if it wanted one. But again, this overlay district that's presented to you would not allow something like that to happen. It's a much more modest set of dimensional standards. So in the Green Street District, I did have folks ask if they could reduce the minimum lot size. You have, although the Lee Trailer Park area is the bulk of the, the district, there are some residences in the north, closer to the Parkway, that actually are currently pre-existing non-conforming, and they asked, could we reduce the lot size to 3,000 square feet? So all of those lots would now be conforming residential lots. And, you know, that is certainly something that the council could consider. And similarly, I was asked in the Green Street District, can we add additional lots? Gentleman in the back owns a few parcels right along this side, right next to Libre Rank Highway, and they wanted to know if this could be added, and, and that would still make it a contiguous district. And as long as, you know, you're not just cherry picking individual lots throughout the city, but it's part of a contiguous district, it's certainly something we could look at, provided it had the council's support and the public's support as well. A few questions about 40R, the state guidelines we, we are talking about tonight. This, again, it's not an affordability mandate. It's an option, not a requirement. How are affordable units defined? It would be affordable, which is 30% of the household income of a family at or below 80%. And the median household income is $73,000 in Riviere. So basically, an affordable home is a home that's affordable to the average Riviere resident. And then I've been asked, since there's no council or ZBA review, who approves these projects? The site plan review would be the plan approval authority, the city engineer, plumbing inspector, DPW superintendent, and so on. I think you're all quite familiar with the Site Plan Review Group, that they review a lot of large projects, and they're pretty well-versed in doing this, and they're professionals. And I will stop talking now and take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tom. I'm going to open it up to the council.
I'm going to open it up to the council. Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you, Mr. Director, thank you for being up here, and thank you for, you know, your willingness to talk through this with us, even offline. I just rhetorically, and maybe it's because I'm almost done, but I, why are we even here with regard to some of this stuff? Because it sounds like essentially, here we are, it's November 13th, we have to come into compliance by December 31st. So as a council, we have, give or take, you know, we have three meetings left in the year. December 18th, I believe, is our last night. So we have about a month to kind of go through this and figure out how we want to proceed. And by the way, if you don't approve something, if you don't approve it, you're going to lose all these funding options. When did the goalpost change with regard to the MBTA law? When did we realize, when did the interpretation change?
Right. So it was about when I started last year, October of 2022, that the new regulations came out. And then this August was when additional interpretations came out relative to, originally it was just two grant programs that were subject to this, and the civil liability component wasn't a part of it. That was all added in August of this year. But basically, you know, around last spring, we started to do the compliance testing and figured out, you know, basically, I wanted to make sure we had to do this. And one of the big questions was the RC1 district along the beach and whether that would be included. That actually could help us get pretty darn close to compliance, if not right there. But the modeling was somewhat complicated stuff that we had to outsource, that we couldn't do in-house, it was done by MAPC. But we were doing that throughout the summer. And then earlier this year, we held a public hearing to discuss submitting the application and talked about a lot of the same things I talked about tonight. And then we've been waiting for the state to review and approve the application, which they have not yet done, which is why it's taken a little bit longer than expected. But we do anticipate having it approved before the council meets later in November.
Have we talked to the state delegation in terms of, you know, is there any way that some of the items that might have been counted before this interpretation changed could still be counted or considered? Because it seems like here we are again, Revere's going to get the shaft, and we're going to have to, you know, change zoning. It just, it just doesn't, I don't know. I just don't agree.
Right. So I think with regard to the Suffolk Downs component, which I think when the presentation was given to all, originally, we were, we had the expectation that Suffolk Downs would make us compliant. I don't, I don't think there's any room for change in that interpretation because that was a special permit development, and that's, that's pretty much written into the law. I think with the RC1 component was the one where, and frankly, both of them, once we realized we might not be in compliance, were things that we brought to the state, we brought to their attention, we didn't bring to the state delegation. Perhaps we should have, but particularly with the special permit piece, I didn't think there was much room for negotiation there.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Tom, thank you for coming up tonight for the presentation. And just to clarify, we don't need 6,100-plus units to be built. We're a few thousand short of the number that we need, correct?
Correct. And the 2,000 that we're short of, we don't even need those to be built. We just need our zoning to allow for it.
Correct. So we, if we pass this, we end up with $600,000, and then once units are put on, we get the extra money there. If no units are built, we still get that $600,000?
We would get the $600,000, we wouldn't get the 3,000.
Right, each unit, correct. Okay. So the district that looks like it came up, Green Street, that abuts the trailer park, correct?
Abuts and includes it, yes.
Okay. So am I wrong? Don't we have like 400 affordable units coming online at Lee Trailer Park?
No.
No, you, go ahead.
No, they changed it. So they went down to 220 now. That's what they're proposing, total units. But I don't think it's going to be total units because I think within the long run, they're going to put another 220 units there. But right now, it's 220 units without any affordable housing. And when there was 420 units, it was 70 affordable housings, and they're not offering any affordable housing at all. So we haven't had any negotiations or talks, discussions about it. So, I mean, it's hearsay.
Thank you. And I think that would be a slap in the face to all those people, we moved out of the trailer park to put 200 units up and not offer one affordable. So I don't have much negotiation to do with them. That was disappointing because I was, I thought those units would be included. I guess no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Madam President. A lot of the questions I had were asked by Counselor Serino and Counselor Silvestri. So you mentioned zoning bonuses. This is sounding a lot like the inclusionary zoning that we had before us about a year and a half ago, and we voted it down unanimously because of all the different forgivances that we were giving developers to build. This FAR increase, now, mind you, we need affordable housing like yesterday, but this FAR increase, it makes me nervous. I don't want building after building going in, and we're washing each other's windows. So could you just touch on exactly, again, the forgiveness for the zoning bonuses and also explain if this zoning overlay is going to supersede, say, like the HD or LD overlay district?
Great questions. So the overlay district, to answer your last question first, wouldn't supersede the HD overlays? This would just be an additional way? And frankly, although single-family and 2s and 3s are allowed, I think the more likely scenario would be larger developments that take advantage of it. But no, that would still be in existence, the HD and the other overlays related to development on undersized lots. But to your other question about FAR allowances, just to remind you again, the property I was talking about before, the Pete's Super Beef redevelopment that was approved by the ZBA, that could not have been approved under this 40R ordinance because the FAR allowances are quite modest. And similarly with the Lee Trailer Park development, which will be brought in front of the council, I believe, in the new year. But just for a sneak peek, they're proposing 0.75 parking spaces. They're proposing a seven-story development, and they're proposing an FAR of 2.62. So in the Green Street District, the FAR is 1.5. The parking spaces are, requirements are about 1.4 on average, and the height limit's six stories. So that also would not be eligible under this district. So again, we are proposing zoning changes, but I think they're quite modest, and particularly compared to a lot of the development that we've seen in the city, most of it would not be eligible under this district.
So if we don't approve this tonight, is there any other way to be compliant?
So some of the other proposals that were brought about after we did our modeling included making modest enhancements throughout the city and modest enhancements that weren't part of the 40R district. And the reason I like 40R, you've heard me talk enough about affordability and the affordability crisis we're in. That's all well and good. At the same time, I've heard a lot of the discussions that have been taking place over the last few months about development. And the 40R program basically assures that only the developments that have affordable housing would be eligible, which shrinks the pool of eligible developers as well. So I think you would be looking at less development being created through this than the alternative, frankly, would be not just as a 40R, but across the board tweaking the zoning that anyone could come and develop. So I think there's kind of both sides of that argument that are compelling, in my view, and which is why I went this route.
Thank you. And you said that we were short about 2,000 units?
Yes. And again, that's not to be built, it's just analyzing our ordinance, what it would potentially allow for.
Is there anywhere else in the city we could put affordable housing that you can think of?
Well, I mean, I think you could consider any of the districts that I had mentioned that already allow multifamily development by right. The thing about affordable housing is you kind of need it at scale to make the numbers work. So it's hard to draw, you know, a zone around an area of just one and two families because it just doesn't quite work at the same level. So all of the general business districts, the RC2 districts along the beach, I think they all could be potential affordable housing districts.
Thank you. And I agree with Counselor Serino on this. I just, again, here we are with a gun to our head, do this or lose $6.6 million. It just doesn't sit right with me. So I just want to be clear, if we vote no, $6 million goes out the window, we don't get that 600 upfront, we don't get 3,000 per unit. And if we do vote and we get 3,000 per unit, is it one-time or is it residual?
So the 600,000 payment at the outset is a one-time. But then any housing that is developed and permitted through the 40R would receive $3,000 per unit after occupancy is achieved for a given project, which is similar to how CIT functions today.
And does that work for any current affordable housing, or is it just what's built from now until?
It would be any housing that is permitted through this program. So any either affordable housing or smaller-scale housing that's approved through the 40R in the Green Street and the Shirley Avenue districts. But if there was any other affordable housing built in other parts of the city, it wouldn't receive the bonus unless it was part of a 40R district.
So if we find a way to build 2,000 units, we're looking at $6 million?
Theoretically, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Tom, for the presentation. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get some clarity on what you're saying here. I know you didn't, you didn't want to scare, give us scare tactics, but apparently that's what you did. So let's not bull anybody. Are you saying that we're going to lose grants that we've already applied for and received if we're not in compliance by the end of this year?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Good, okay. Because that's what it sounded like, and I knew that wasn't the case.
And apologies for mischaracterizing.
Now, wait a minute. Let me ask my questions, and we'll see if what I'm saying is accurate. So let's assume we don't pass this by the 31st of December, and we pass it two weeks into next year, or three weeks into next year, or two months into next year. Are we not going to be eligible for those grants again?
Well, we are in a brave new world, Counselor.
Once we're in compliance, let me ask it a different way so I can get an answer. If, if we become compliant in two months, won't we be eligible for these grants?
According to the way that the statute is written, no.
I disagree with that. I totally disagree with that, and I'm going to prove you wrong. But I, now I have to do more research.
And I just want to say, I wasn't trying to mislead the council that we would lose that money.
No, I didn't, I didn't, no, I didn't mean you were trying to lead, I meant it came off that way. I didn't mean you were trying to do that. I didn't mean you were, you were...
Understood. I was just trying to build context about what the programs mean.
You were trying to snow anybody. I didn't mean it that way, but that's the way it sounded. So I knew it wasn't true, it wasn't what you were trying to say. You were trying to say that we need to be in compliance in order to apply for these grants in the future.
That's correct.
And I agree with that. But I don't agree with that if we don't come in compliance by the 31st of December, that we'll never be able to be ready for Mass Works grants or any of these other grants. Because once we're in compliance, there is no way they can deny us. And that's my position on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Marbido.
I think most have been, most of my questions have been answered. So the 5.5 million in funding that we've, we've already received, right, to fund projects? So that was fiscal year 2023 that we're in.
What I presented tonight, I think, was about $6 million, and that was the fiscal year '24 grants received. But those programs are the programs that we would lose out on. So that was just what we received this year. So it didn't include, for example, we had work at the McKinley taking a look at site feasibility for redevelopment. That was through the underutilized properties program, which we didn't take advantage of this year. But it's always kind of a moving target, but we get a lot of money from those programs, and that is true.
Okay. Now, as far as the incentives and... Let me look over here real quick. So for the zoning incentive payment, it has to be state-approved. So we could pass it in by December 31st, right? And they could decline it or say, hey, no, this isn't, this isn't correct, we want you to change A, B, and Z, correct?
They could, that's correct. I mean, I think we've been in continuous communication with the state about our intent to submit this application, and I've had these approved before in the past, and I've found that the state's comments, because we're using a boilerplate document, we're only making changes really in the dimensional and use considerations that you saw. The rest of that document, that's the state's document. So I've found them generally not to change much, except at the margins.
Okay. And the payment is not 600K, it's up to 600,000, correct?
It's up to 600,000, and that qualifier is there because it depends on their, how many units we will potentially create with this zoning ordinance. And that is ultimately dependent on the votes that you all make.
And once, once again, just to clarify, not built, created within the zoning, within the zoning?
Yeah, only built in our imagination. And ultimately, yes, some of this could be built. I would think it's unlikely we're going to see 2,000 units developed through this ordinance alone.
So $3,000 for each additional unit of housing created through this overlay district, right? So I have a question for you. Does that, so that, once the plan is approved, we're eligible for each unit created, right? Not built up to?
In that case, built. So in the Green Street neighborhood, let's say 300-unit development was built, and once the occupancy permits were received, we would receive $900,000 in that case because all 300 units are bonus units. They weren't allowed previously in zoning. In Shirley Avenue, it's more art than science because we already allow multifamily development by right. But let's say if there's a development that can build 12 units of housing, and our ordinance now allows for it to have 16 units, we would receive 4,000 or 3,000 per those four units, so 12,000 total. So because Shirley Avenue already allows it, the bonus received is a smaller amount.
And we have to be realistic. Most municipalities don't get the, receive the full amount. Like, it's up to 3,000 for each additional unit, up to 600K for the incentive.
So in the 3,000 per unit, I can tell you that's, we will receive. The up to 600,000 is just because it depends on what you all approve and then the numbers that the state takes. It could be 600, it could be 300. It would be no lower than 300,000.
Okay. Now, as far as the bonus, density bonus payment, is there an expiration date for as far as when they're going to pay out the, when they will pay 3,000 for each additional unit?
There's not a stated one, no. I mean, unless the state ran out of money. But it's built within state statute that that is as part of the law.
And there's no expiration on the state statute?
No expiration.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Madam President. Since the main focus of this whole thing is between the trailer park area and Shirley Avenue, I'm very cautious, to be honest with you. I know you said that a lot of things aren't going to happen unless things happen. Because, you know, I've told you that I'm very concerned about the height limits, especially those that are next to the RB district, because you've got two-family houses there, and there's a potential of a six-family house going next to a two-family. I know we just had a five-story building built in a GB district next to some two-families, but they almost did that by right as far as the height is concerned. But I'm still very cautious. I still want to talk a little further on options for Shirley Ave. I'm very, very concerned about this, you know, and I really haven't... you know, and I really haven't set a goal of where I'm going to vote on this thing.
Understood. And I will plan to bring at the public hearing a little bit more of a visual to talk about how FAR builds into lot size and heights. So, you know, the average lot size in that neighborhood that you're referring to is usually about 3,000 and 4,000. So in order to have a two-FAR development, you're talking about 6,000 square feet. So you're not going to be able to just see that type of, you know, four, five, six-story development on such a small lot size, but I think we certainly have time to talk that through and think about what adjustments we need to make accordingly.
Somebody would have to buy three or four lots of land to make those numbers, make them happen.
That's true. That would be one possibility.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. Tom, thanks for coming up. You said that you selected the 40R program. What other programs were available that would comply with the ruling of the state? I guess I can understand the concern of my colleagues. We're here, it's, what, November 13th? Is that today? We probably have just a couple more meetings, and this is coming right at us. And it's a pretty big change, okay, and that I would believe, you know, my fellow colleagues would like to research a little further. So to try to rush this through is a concern for a lot of the counselors. So, I mean, I don't know what other programs were available. You know, you selected the 40R, okay, and I understand you gave us a reason, but what other programs were available that would comply as well?
Sure. So the other program would basically be for us to just adopt an ordinance locally without using 40R. But basically, you know, to comply, it would look functionally the same, except any large developments wouldn't be required to have affordable, and we wouldn't get money from the density bonus payments.
And I understand when you say that, but as far as I'm concerned, if you look at the density payback, that's basically taken the place of the CIT funds. So for me, it's a wash, right, is the way I'm looking at it. You know, are you saying that once we get that money, we're not getting any CIT money from the developer?
Right. So if we were to not use 40R, and we were just to update our zoning to allow for more housing by right, more housing applications would come in to develop by right, and those would be ineligible for CIT. So either way, to get in compliance, we'd have to increase the density allowances under our current zoning, and we could either do it through 40R, which allows for replacement in effect of CIT, or we just do it through our local zoning ordinance, in which case we would lose that state, you know, compensatory funding for the CIT that we lose.
And the permitting, I know that was one of the permitting fees. I remember in inclusionary zoning, we would be sacrificing the permitting fees as well. Is that, does that take, does that happen in the 40R as well?
Good question. No, that's not the case here at all. So permitting fees and all that would still remain. This is just a bonus to the city ultimately, and the financial incentives and to the developer in terms of a little bit of additional density.
Yeah. No, and I understand what's coming about from the state. My concern is, is the residents have been complaining about more density, more density, more apartments, and here we are, you're presenting more density. So, you know, be prepared for that, and that's the biggest obstacle that I see here, is that you're standing up there asking for more density in those places. And I understand what the state is requiring in terms of that. I just think it's, right now, it's a, it's a, it's a big decision to make, and with a lot of information that we have to look at. And it's just coming up towards the end of the year, so I can understand where my colleagues have some concerns. That's all.
I have not had my head in the sand the last couple of months.
No, I'm not saying you have.
No, no, I've been, I've been very cognizant of the conversations taking place around development, which is why the two districts that I did propose tonight, for example, in the Green Street district, the community feedback I heard was, please reduce the lot sizes more, please add my property to it. So I picked areas where I felt might be more receptive to that density conversation, and similarly in Shirley Avenue, where we did hear a lot of calls for affordability. So I understand that we're in a different, difficult place for development here, so I tried to work within that difficulty to find two locations that I think hopefully will meet in the middle and produce, again, just kind of modest improvements. But, you know, to the point of understanding this is a bit of a rushed process, I'm here, open and available via email, phone calls. I'd be happy to set meetings and walk through this with all of you, because I know it's complicated, and I know we've got a lot of work to do before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair, please? I'm concerned, just like my partner in crime, Counselor Novosolsky, because we have five acres in the back of Green Street. We have two ways to get out of Green Street and Pratt Place. Right now, we're inundated with traffic at 4:00, 3:00, 5:00 o'clock. You can't even get down that street. I understand that apartments, and especially apartments near the T, have less cars, but say you put 220 units down there, and say, just say, that 300 cars are there, okay? That's 300 cars coming out of two streets, no backroads, and this is what we negotiated. We negotiated they were going to put up 420 units, and I think we talked about this, and I asked them for a backroad, and they couldn't afford it. So now, all this, and I guarantee, and I probably won't be here, but I guarantee that they'll put up 220 units, so they don't, they can get away with not having a backroad, and they'll put up 220 more, because they have five acres. So this concerns me. It concerns, you know, they said, oh, they'll turn around and they'll go, if they got to go to Boston, they'll turn around. Well, they won't. They'll come through Beachmont, they'll take a left or a right, and they'll go through Bennington Street. So that adds more parking, more cars, and I'm just really concerned about this. You're, I mean, the density, you're talking about density. We can't even get down with RABAV anymore, you know? It's terrible. So that's, that's my concern with this project.
Understood.
And I understand there's money involved. I understand all that. We need affordable housing, but we, I really do think that we really need to discuss this and see where we can put affordable housing.
Understood.
You know, and I know we're land poor, but still. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And just to be clear, the 220 units that are being proposed by the developer would have to get approved by the city council through a PUD. It would not be eligible under this district, because although it offers some density bonuses, it's not to that level, not by any stretch. So again, we tried to propose pretty modest enhancements that wouldn't lead to the density concerns that you're outlining, which are very legitimate.
Sure, come on up.
We have, my clients and I have spoken.
We have to address your name and address, please?
Yeah, Attorney Lawrence Simeoni, 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. I'm an attorney. I have a very limited question. It has to do with the process. Right now, he's identified a overlay district that you've seen as part of your package. I have a client who has some of that, of his property along Green Street in that overlay district, and has talked to the chief planner about adding that on that other property, so he would have all his property within the overlay district, which he thinks it will be a success. I'm only asking, does the chief planner have to show you an overlay district before he goes to print, or you go to print the public hearing, or is that something that's going to be movable and bendable after the public hearing process?
I can answer that. It's movable and bendable. And certainly, I now just learned a few days ago about these additional properties. I can bring that to the next council meeting first, for certain, and if there's other residents that want more questions and would like additional properties added, we've, understandably, it's a rushed process, but we've got a lot of time, and I'd be happy to be thoughtful and help you all think through the various options.
Thank you. Any more, Counselors? Counselor Sivestri, I'll give you the leeway.
Just real quick, Tom, just for the future, if you could put together, like, if we don't vote this forward, right, let's say we don't move it forward, and we lose those grants, and we lose the opportunity for future grant fundings, can you get us some information, maybe through the CFO, on what impact that would have with the city as well?
I can certainly do that.
Counselor Serena?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you to the director. Building on what Counselor Sivestri just asked, could we also come prepared with some sort of Plan B or other alternative, I don't know if that's possible, but to, you know, have a Plan B to try to be in compliance by December 31st? Is that an option?
I've thought of a Plan B, C, D, E, F. It's been on top of my mind as a priority, so I could certainly bring another option.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Yes, come on up. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. Just a quick question. Do the units have to be affordable housing? For example, if I had a two-family, and by right now I can make a three-family, do I have to make that affordable, or is it, I build it and I charge what I want?
So it's an overlay, so if, in your underlying district, you're already allowed to build, which is the case definitely in the Shirley Avenue neighborhood, you could still do that. The limit we've, I proposed to the council is eight, but the council could go as low as one, which is to say, any development in this district would have to be affordable. They could go as high as 12, which means that anything 13 units or above would have to be affordable. Between one, between zero and 12 is the threshold that can be set by the council.
Just a little more clarification. So just currently, we need 717 affordable housing units because of all the units we already have. I'm not talking about the 2,000 stuff that you are talking about. Let's just say, I happen to own 10 houses, and I turned them all into three families, and I don't do any affordable housing. Is the city now going to be on the hook for that 10% of the affordable housing that I didn't build? Would that add to the number of 717?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so every additional market rate unit makes it tougher for us to meet our 10%, because it's a fractional number. So you change the denominator, the numerator needs to get higher. Thank you.
Thank you. This is going to be ordered to a public hearing?
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the chief of police to provide police presence to curb speeding and assist overall with traffic enforcement at every school during pickup and drop-off.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, awarded.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the superintendent of the DPW to install speed tables near every school to curb speeding.
Counselor Cogliandro.
I think this was filed this term by another counselor. I forget who it was, but here we are again. Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, awarded.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Councilors Cogliandro and McKenna that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to Anthony Pozziale for hosting a fundraiser for The Good Diner and Hector's Barbershop, which were both heavily impacted by a water main break on Broadway.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. This should have been filed for the last meeting, but I wanted to wait until after the election was over, because this is something that deserves recognition. This was an event that was last-minute changed to a fundraiser for the two businesses that lost a lot, lost a lot of business, and it definitely deserves recognition. Thank you.
I'm going to save my comments for next week, November 27th. Thank you. All in favor, all opposed, awarded.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the city council order to a public hearing and ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to residency and personnel.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Wish to withdraw the motion.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the city council order to a public hearing and ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to the assistant city clerk and zoning board of appeals clerk.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. The last time the zoning board of appeals clerk salary was increased was 1998. I earlier thought that that was 15 years, but I'm mistaken. That is 25 years, right? Okay, 25 years. And if you put this into the state's inflation calculator, it should be $12,000, and I feel that with the increase in public, you know, participation, and the fact that there's far more ways to communicate now, it's a lot more work, and it's definitely something that I hope the council will consider supporting. Also, the assistant clerk position. So right now, the assistant city clerk is labeled as an administrative assistant, okay? And there is no salary line for assistant city clerk. Just to, you know, talk about other departments, we have an assistant auditor, we have an assistant purchasing agent, assistant parking director, assistant library director, so on and so forth. So I'd like to create this, this line item, because what's been happening is this poor woman has not received the compensation she should be receiving, and further that, excuse me, gentlemen, and further, there are, you know, all of these other departments and within the city are getting paid as assistants to the director or assistant directors. And also, you know, in doing homework, I'm looking at Medford, whose assistant city clerk makes $77,000, Chelsea's $77,000, Malden's $78,000, Somerville $92,000, Everett $92,000. So this salary is actually lower than what it should be. And, you know, it's unfortunate, it's been so long, this employee's worked here for approximately 12, 13 years, actually, maybe more than that. I think since 2006, this person's been an employee here. So it's really about time that we start looking into these things and fixing it, so people are compensated properly. And where, like I said, this is not a line item, I would really love the support to add this to the, to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ordered to a public hearing? Oh, sorry, Counselor Maribito. Go ahead.
Through you, Madam President, to the city clerk. Can you reach out to our CFO? The city council approved funding to have an outside company come in, evaluate all the roles and responsibilities in the city, to make sure everyone's paid in comparison to what their job titles are in other municipalities, and if you can just send the city council that information?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimbuto?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to go on record that I totally support Counselor Cogliandro in this amendment. This is positively needed and warranted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. To my colleague's request, I believe we did one of those. I think the CFO has already done one of those comparisons, so, and I might be mistaken, but I don't know, I don't think we've been presented with it, but I think it has been done, so if I'm not mistaken. And I too couldn't agree more in, with the motion, and feel it's, it's definitely warranted. Thank you.
Counselor Sivestri?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree wholeheartedly with the motion. I'm wondering if, because, in, Madam Clerk, maybe you have the answer to this. I'm wondering if the salary hasn't changed, because there was an assessment done a few years back, could it be because she's the assistant clerk, and technically, she's not actually in one of the steps, or is she in a step and shouldn't be, shouldn't her position be taken out of the regular bargain unit?
In my opinion, yes, accordance with, I believe it's City of Somerville versus Labor Lee. accordance with, I believe it's City of Somerville versus Labor Relations from 2001, it was determined that the position of Assistant City Clerk and City Clerk are within the legislative branch of government, not entitled to collective bargaining under 150E of the general laws.
Correct. So, more or less, unless we approve this, she really is not going to have that collective bargaining option, and that's probably why she's sat in a salary not, that's moved in 12 years. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Going to order, what are we going to do? We're going to, excuse me? We're going to order it to a public hearing?
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Novosolsky that the acting mayor request the MBTA to install a shelter with seats at the bus stop across from 1465 Northshore Road for the 110, 116, and 119 bus routes.
Counselor Cog, Novosolsky.
Thank you, Madam President. This was requested by several of the residents in the neighborhood. The MBTA has given this city the shaft on everything, bus stops, bus routes, and I think the least they can do is, the bus stop that they made across from Bob's Autobody, at least give the people a place to sit and be protected from the weather. So, I hope that my colleagues approve this, and ask the mayor to send this to the MBTA, and also, can we send copies also to a state delegation?
Any other councilors?
Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Council President McKenna and Counselor Sivestri that the acting mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of converting the green space at the end of Prebody Way, formerly known as Unity Ave, into a passive park by planting a unity tree and installing seating for residents to enjoy the view.
Thank you. This was presented to me by Counselor Sivestri after he spoke to the BIC, the Beauchamp Improvement Committee, last week to make the green space on the top of Unity Ave into Unity Park, creating like a park-like atmosphere. I know this has been a topic to do by the BIC for a long time, but it never came to fruition. Now that we're changing the name of Unity Ave, it would be fitting to make this green space into a park. I would like to see the Beauchamp Improvement Committee work with L. Baker, City Planner and of Open Spaces and Environment Planner, the Macurty Brothers Landscaping Company to design a space for residents to enjoy. Thank you. Counselor Sivestri.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, since I was a young boy, I've watched seniors and actually anyone who's, who goes food shopping or shopping down into the march, down in the, in the squire, in the square, and then walk back up those stairs, literally stand for 10, 12 minutes trying to catch their breath before they move on. I think in keeping the unity and having that a passive sitting area, people can take a break if they walk up the stairs. It's, it's not going to be a total hangout area, it's going to be just a passive area where people can enjoy the view, stop for a few minutes, catch a breath, and continue. I think it's a, it's a great option, and I thank the Beauchamp Improvement Committee for bringing this to my attention. Thank you.
Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered. You can come up. Yep. State your name and address for the record.
Edward Devaux, 216 Crescent Ave, Beauchamp. First off, I want to thank you, Madam President, for your support of this motion, and Counselor Sivestri for listening and talking with us and helping us develop this motion. One thing that's very important to note, and I'm glad to hear and happy to see that the Beauchamp Improvement Committee will be active, actively involved in the development of this park, working with L. Baker and those that we need to work within the government, within the city. I do want to make it very clear that from the outset, it was not the Beauchamp Improvement Committee that had issues with the vote that was taken. It was a number of us who are members of the Beauchamp Committee, but took individual actions and communications to address this issue. We want to make that clear, because we never had the opportunity, because of the timing, to bring this up with our membership, and we didn't want to come out and say, BIC thinks this should be done. So, BIC didn't head up the effort to have this discussion lead to these motions, but BIC stands ready to support the motion and to work with the city to go ahead and create this park, which I think will be, you know, a jewel at the top of Prebody Way now. So, thank you all for making that happen. And also, the other part that I wanted to say is, and I hope you all support it, and there are two motions here, I'm speaking on behalf of the two motions. The other point that I wanted to make is, is that, you know, it was never about, you know, the Prebody family being honored, and I just want to make sure that's clear. We've tried to make that clear every part of the way. Every one of us agrees they should be honored. We just did not agree with the process and the way that it was being done. That being said, we've come with a compromise solution, and we're very happy with that solution that's being proposed. The other thing is that our primary purpose also was ensuring that the residents on Unity Ave, then, now in Prebody Way, were going to get assistance financially and information-wise to make the changes that are going to be necessary coming about from this straight average change. So, all of those things, I think, are coming to pass, and now, the residents are taken care of, and once more, Beauchamp's going to have another beautiful park, one that's going to sit on top of Prebody Way overlooking Beauchamp Square, and frankly, the park, as been noted, will be aptly named Unity Park. And for the sake of unity and for community collaboration, you know, I hope that you all agree that this is a great idea, and that these two motions are fitting and we'll pass them. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification. Any councilors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Council President McKenna and Counselor Sivestri that the acting mayor request the appropriate staff at City Hall to assist the residents and businesses of Prebody Way to change their address and cover any costs associated with said change.
I'm going to give this to Counselor Sivestri.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think there's going to be a lot of financial cost that comes along with it, but if, we do have residents on, on Prebody Way, formerly Unity Way, that need assistance. I'm hoping that the city can, can help in that effort. If there's a language barrier or something in that area, maybe our 3-1-1 employees can step up and help with that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and I will be one of those people that will go up to those houses with, you know, someone that could speak whatever language and see what they need. All in favor, all opposed. Any other councilors? All in, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Sivestri that the acting mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of installing illuminated stop signs at the intersection of New Hall and Malden Streets. The stop signs that were recently installed are very difficult to see during the evening hours.
Counselor Sivestri.
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you, Madam.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Sivestri that the City Council award certificates of merit to Officer Brendan Leslie, Officer Christopher Panzini, and Sergeant Jackie Dean in recognition of receiving the Trooper George L. Hannah Memorial Award.
Counselor Sivestri.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll hold my comments for the night of the issuing, but I think all offices are deserving. The state recognized them, the mayor has recognized them, and I think the City Council should. Thank you.
Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered. We have a late communication.
Late communication from the acting mayor relative to the Toys for Tickets Amnesty Program for the 2023 holiday season.
State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Zach Babo. I'm the Director of Parking for the City of Revere, and in the past few years, this program has been a huge hit. Even last year, the senior center did an amazing job getting involved, not that any of the seniors had tickets or anything, they wanted to get involved, and they wanted to donate and make sure that there are some Revere Public School children who have some nice things to open up on Christmas. And as well, it helps our department, helps somebody that might have an overdue ticket, and we think it's a great cause to try to negate some fees in order for something great for Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babo. Anybody else would like to say anything? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered. We have a point of personal privilege, Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you, and just for the edification of the residents here and who are watching, Counselor Rizzo unfortunately is out of state tonight due to a family, a death in the family, extended family, so he is attending a funeral in New Jersey and was unable, obviously, to be here tonight. So, just wanted to make that clear on his behalf, that, you know, we express our condolences to the family, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for all of your participation in tonight's City Council meeting. This meeting now stands adjourned to be met on Monday, November 27th. Wishing all the residents of Revere a happy Thanksgiving, and may this upcoming holiday season fill you with love, good health, gratitude, and lots of turkey. Thank you.